Okay, let's run through that again. Roll call. Everybody is in attendance. And we'll go to the public comment section and read this to you. Pursuant to board policy number 2350, public comment may be limited to three minutes per person or 30 minutes per topic. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or recording secretary prior to the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a public matter regarding a matter not on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or recording secretary prior to the point in the meeting for open forum and non-agenda items. Public comment cards are available at the information table at the rear of the room or for the recording secretary or online. Okay, if we could go for the pledge of allegiance, so Ms. Gaines?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item 9.1, agenda approval. Do we have a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none? Advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passage unanimously. Okay, now we go down to item 10.1, approval of resolution number 21-22/12, recognizing Mr. John Carrato. Somebody I went to school here with back in the day.
Whereas John Carrato is a native of the Antelope Valley community and whereas John is an alumnus of the Antelope Valley College and whereas John devoted 23 years to the Antelope Valley College as a director of Antelope Valley College Foundation and whereas John took a leadership role in alumni and friends shepherding the service awards for alumni and whereas John's service and support in the community resulted in the development of thousands of dollars and support for the advancement of college programs. And whereas John is committed to student opportunity and success, now therefore be it resolved and ordered the Board of Trustees of the Antelope Valley Community College District that Mr. John Carrato is officially recognized and commended for his service to Antelope Valley College, its foundation in the Antelope Valley, resolved this 14th day of February 2022. And we have for you an aerial of the campus. It's not what you went to school at. But thank you very much. And if you want to address the board, you're more than welcome to. And Diane has some comments as well.
I'm glad that John has reached this age of life where he's taking an opportunity to rest away from the board. He has been the has been one of the most active members of the foundation board. He even, I have to brag, we do have a wine walk coming up in April. Just have to do a little plug. But John sold the most tickets two years ago when we had it, 87 tickets. I mean, that's almost unheard of. That's half the population. That tells you he knows everybody in town and he's not afraid to ask for help. So I just want to say personally, John, thank you. You're gonna cry, I'll go there. But we have pride together, but you've been a great inspiration, great support, and we still have your number and we know who you are. Okay?
Thank you, Diane. Thank you very much. I just have to say that this is the best kept secret in the Antelope Valley. As much as everybody's trying to get word out to the community, Antelope Valley College offers so much to this community, people don't realize what a gem this is. And this is not a paid for legal announcement. This is because I graduated from here in 68 and I think one of those teachers is still living. But anyway, the basis academically that you get here afforded me to get a scholastic scholarship to USC. And that is a true story for many, many other students that have come through this fantastic campus. You've got to be proud of this place. I know you've gone through a lot of, I should be saying, discussions and things are are going to work out for the better. But remember, our motto has always been students first. Keep that in mind. You can't lose that success. So congratulations to Antelope Valley College. Thank you for making my life better. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And for those of you who were gonna buy wine ticket tickets from John this year, I will be selling wine tickets.
Well, I could tell some stories about John from back in the day, but I'll keep those to myself. So moving along to open forum on on agenda items and we have a list of public comment cards. We'll start with Pamela Ford.
Good evening. I'm Pamela Ford, Classified Union President. Mr. Buffalo and Board of Trustees, I want to bring to your attention that back pay and leave have not have still not been provided to employees and it is now eight years later. Back pay calculations have not even been completed. We as affected classified are disappointed that the district intends to only provide accrued leave and not back pay, which will invite another legal fight and cause more delay. Martin Luther King said in an interview with David Siskind that "time is used more effective by people of ill will than people of goodwill." And that is more true now than ever, since this has been being drug out for so long. Please prompt the district to get this matter resolved with complete compliance without further delay. Thank you.
Jason Bowen.
Being delivered to the Board of Trustees who are elected officials. Corruption is a form of dishonesty or a criminal offense which is undertaken by a person or an organization which is entrusted with a position of authority in order to acquire illicit benefits or abuse power for one's personal gain. Cronyism is the appointment of friends and associates to positions of authority without proper regard to their qualifications. Now, I understand that tonight, Mr. Howard Davis will be appointed as Vice President of Academic Affairs. And my comments are intended no way to reflect negatively on him. However, I simply want to comment on the process that got us to this point. What was displayed in this process, in my opinion, is nepotism, corruption, discrimination, cronyism, abuse of power, contempt, retaliation, retribution, and betrayal. Betrayal with regards to the non-renewal of Dr. Aaron Vine's contract, who provided services to this college for eight years. He was let go in my, from my understanding, was rather surprised at the non-renewal of his contract. And he was not afforded dignity. He was not afforded respect. He was not afforded an opportunity to leave on his own terms with honor, glory, and overwinning pride in what he achieved. And it's betrayal in that there was no loyalty demonstrated for his service or consideration given to the fact that he garnered the esteem of his colleagues, of faculty, of staff, and especially the students. Corruption in that Ms. Isabel Saber was dismissed despite the fact that she was overwhelmingly qualified for her position, worked incessantly, had the respect of faculty and staff, and in a fair race would defeat any candidate for the position of Vice President. In fact, two hiring committees declared her the superior candidate and yet she found herself in December on administrative paid leave without cost and as in it was given as a non-disciplinary action. Now, I feel that what should have been displayed is kindness, mercy, respect, and these individuals should have been given a chance to shine as they were already shining for our community. What's most tragic, however, in this is that this has an adverse effect on the students, on our community, and
Could we go ahead and wrap it up? I'll give you
Okay, could I have one more minute? 60 seconds? Thank you. Appreciate it. The hardest thing to teach students is that they can achieve, that they can master whatever they put their minds to. They can be masters of Einstein's metric theory of gravity or quantum field theory. Getting them to believe that is hard enough, yet it's even more difficult to get them to believe that if they invest that time and sacrifice, that all of the opportunities in the world are available to them. What determination of Isabel Saber, the message it sends and the non-renewal of Aaron Vine's contract, what it communicates is that dream only so much, reach only so far, opportunities of leadership, opportunities of change in the world, opportunities of making a difference. These are reserved for the privileged and the connected. Thank you very much.
Desiree Lee.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Desiree Lee and I'm a proud ABC graduate and employee. I began my journey in 2008 as a student and student employee and became a member of the classified staff in 2014. Since then, I have witnessed an immense decline in the morale and treatment of the classified staff and our union representatives. The punitive nature of our administration has bred animosity amongst one another and an us versus them mentality with administration and faculty that is not conducive to a productive and efficient work environment. Members of the board, have any of you come onto our campus during business hours? Do you know the struggles that we go through on a daily basis? Yes, we serve our students and often do it with a smile while inside we are barely holding on. Many of us are parents without reprieve from constant worry of bringing something home to our children due to the sheer volume of in-person contact that we endure. Many of my colleagues were afflicted with either getting exposed or having COVID-19 and instead of receiving similar treatment of faculty where they were able to work from home, were forced to use their accumulated time for something that was completely out of their control. It is both disheartening and mind-boggling, the amount of double standards that are allowed to run rampant. As a member of the classified staff, there is so much that we have witnessed and had to remain silent or put our feelings to the side for the betterment of the community that we serve. However, I think it is time that we receive answers and closure on many different injustices that have occurred on this campus. Where is the closure needed for those that were affected by the Purb ruling? Have you stopped to ask how any of us were affected by the abrupt departure of one of our longest standing administrators of color? Why do we have to change our past practices of enjoying our lunches and breaks together when in reality, due to the amount of services that we provide, many of us are unable or feel guilty to even take a break? Why were members of one of the most highly regarded departments not allowed an opportunity to plead their case or be allowed a place in this new reorganization? I want to leave you with this small glimpse into our everyday reality working here. I ask for you to be more transparent. Fight for those that placed you in the position that you are in today and help build back the trusted morale that has been broken within this institution and within our hearts. We are not okay. So stop expecting us to act as if we are. Thank you.
John Vento.
Okay, remove the mask. Great. Members of the board, this is my colleague Fritz Hemker and I and we have invited Dr. Carolyn Dolberg to the college this week. She will be giving a speech or a presentation on the effects of social media in the American political spectrum. And she's an expert in this field. She's from the University of Iowa. She's also one, an author of one of our books. And through COVID, Fritz and I have gotten real creative to try to figure out to bring these speakers back. And we are, Fritz and I are personally inviting you to come and attend. It's via Zoom. And at the end of this, you will all get another email from me with the Zoom links. We are meeting at 4:00 PM with a small group of students. When I say smaller group, honor students like Rosio and our students in the honors program, and she's going to give a little smaller presentation. Each presentation is about an hour. And then at 6:00 PM, she's giving a broader presentation on the same topic to the general public. And we would just love it to have your presence there. You don't have to turn on your cameras if you don't want to. But it would be really wonderful and we just invite the ABC community to just have a dialogue. It's an hour each presentation. And Fritz, do you want to add anything about what what this whole presentation is about?
Yeah, again, so we're just, you know, we're reaching the point in our political history where the changes that social media have made are becoming more apparent. And so we'll go into the more details, but again, like, you know, January 6th, things like that. There's a real direct social media connection. And so we can now start asking the question, you know, is, there's promise, there's peril. Where are we in these changes? How should we start thinking about American politics, given how people are now getting their information and interacting with each other through social media? So we have an expert who can help talk us through that.
So we would just love to have you there and be there. And I know that you're all busy and you have your lives in focus, but it'd just be great to have you present there.
Is there a place you can come and watch this on campus?
Uh, not necessarily, because it's all done through Zoom. But we have emailed this out to as many students as many faculty.
It sounds like a great presentation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks. Cindy Hendricks.
Evening. Does it matter which one I start with?
You've got two.
I do.
No, just yeah, let's go ahead and start off.
Good evening, President Knutson and Board of Trustees. I'm Cindy Hendricks and I'm here tonight as the lead negotiator for the ABCFT. I wanted to provide an update on the current state of negotiations. Recently, two side letters of agreement were signed, which will provide our students with the opportunity to continue and/or complete programs of study without interruption. The Federation would like to thank Maria Clinton and Dwayne Rumsey for taking on additional duties to ensure that our students are not adversely affected by the loss of other faculty. The process was very smooth. I think we worked well with Ms. Cook. So that was the win. Additionally, the spring COVID MOU was recently signed. While we certainly appreciate the COVID stipend, it is disheartening to know that other schools got double or even triple the amount we received. Perhaps if the district was not paying the full salary for two vice presidents on administrative leave, in addition to paying for an interim VP who was paid at a higher rate, there would be additional funds for the people who are on campus and actually doing the work. The Federation would like to thank the district for continuing the office hours, the adjunct office hours program. Between COVID and the calendar change, which eliminated intercession, our adjunct faculty have been hit hard financially. This program is a small but appreciated way for adjuncts to recoup some losses. More importantly, it is a huge benefit to our students. Many students are still struggling academically and this is an opportunity to provide them with valuable assistance. Full CBA negotiations will be starting soon. Last Friday, the Federation met with Ms. Cook to set up meeting times and dates. The session was extremely productive and set a good tone for upcoming negotiations. Thank you.
Did you cover both topics that you wanted to cover? Well, we have you up next. Again, you fill out two cards.
Stuck on my earring. Guess I'll skip the first line. I'd like to express my concern regarding the continual circumventing of the hiring process for upper level administration. Once again, a new interim VP has been hired due to emergency circumstances. The only emergency is one created by the president when he placed two competent and qualified people on administrative leave. Again, this is not about the qualifications of the new VP. Rather, it is about following the process to ensure that number one, we get a wide pool of candidates and number two, that there is equity in the process. Typically, when a position is open, it is advertised, candidates apply, and a hiring committee is formed. Advertising enables ABC to reach a large candidate pool, not just the person who happens to know the president. A hiring committee is formed so that a cross-section of stakeholders have the opportunity to provide input and perspective regarding each candidate's strengths and weaknesses, once again, helping to assure equity and parity in the process. Please hold this president to the same standards and processes as the rest of the staff.
Okay, Alberto, and I'm not sure how you pronounce.
Thank you. Twenty last names I have. It was a bit shorter. My name is Alberto Manos Agonzo La Reynaga. Used to be a little shorter. But when my dear wife and I got married, I added her name. She added my name. So my apologies for, no worries. Thank you. So hello, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Alberto Manos Agonzo La Reynaga. I'm an adjunct faculty member in the philosophy department. And I'm also fortunate enough to serve in the academic senate and the negotiations team there with the union, here with the union. So some issues that I want to just bring here to the attention, to this body, are things that adjunct faculty have come with, right, towards me, with me, at me, in a good way, yeah? These are at least four issues and the list is not exhaustive. But here, the first one is a priority of assignment, especially when it comes to adjunct faculty over here. Glad that exists, but it's very problematic when it comes to its application. It also has to be requested rather than this document being available to faculty as well. So creates issues and a lot of questions when it comes to whether a faculty member loses a class. To whom and why, over here referred as to bumping rights. The others are heard by my colleague, Dr. Cindy Hundreds, when it comes to the COVID-19 stipend. We're grateful, especially after the survey that Ms. Bridget Cook didn't get a loca, along with former VP of Academic Affairs Isabel Saber. Looking at this information, we are happy here as a faculty to be able to receive this. But disheartened, I think that's a correct word, as Dr. Hendrick pointed out, knowing how much other colleges receive. I think the question is, why did they receive more than us, is fair in this case? And that's what I've been asked, right? A question to contemplate and think about. The other issue is the change of calendar. Here, it's affected, at least in the sense of wages for faculty who, before we're having the intercession, teaching both intercession and summer, had the opportunity to teach more LHE and in this case, because of the change of calendar. The biggest complaint, not necessarily the calendar, but the loss of wages in this case, due to the change of the calendar, being not able to teach the former LHE that they could before. And lastly, over here, as Dr. Hendrick also pointed out with respect to the adjunct office hours, we're happy that in this case it was continued. But unfortunately, there was some sort of misunderstanding last time with different parties when it came to the fall 2020 adjunct office hours where some departments, excuse me, divisions received. They noticed saying that it would have simply suspended while others did not. So it came to a surprise to some and others when they weren't able to follow the process through, to be able to apply for that program here. So as I noted, the list is not exhaustive, but contains issues that have come up in conversation, dialogues, email correspondence, and so on with my dear colleagues in this case. And we just hope that these issues, right, are brought to you or known and that they're resolved, right? For the best parties, and as Mr. Bruce has said, are we over here? Students first, right? So thank you. Good time. I'm wishing everyone a happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. Tamira De Spain.
Hello, members of the board. Mr. President, I'm Tamira Palmetto De Spain, Disability Services Specialist and Honors Counselor for Antelope Valley College. And I have two concerns that I would like to bring to your attention. So one, I want to say thank you for reading my letter about the OSD director, clearly. I did see the asterisks in the new updated reorg, but I would like to, but I also read what it said, which is that four categorical program directors are still going to be eliminated, which would be CalWorks, EOPS, STAR, and OSD eventually with an asterisk saying. It still says four. If we could just change the language to three. That's all I'm gonna ask. Just, just take OSD out of there. Um, we're a very big program. We have two counselors. And when our enrollment starts to go up, our numbers go up a lot. We do intakes continually. Our numbers are constantly going up throughout the semester. I'm doing intakes every week. I know John is doing intakes every week. So it, the language is still in there for four categorical directors to be eliminated with an asterisk saying OSD will be allowed to remain. So I don't know if that's just until Dr. Lucero's contract is over or if that's a permanent thing, but you're shaking your head. No, so I'm taking heart in that, in that that position is not going to be eliminated. Okay. On the other quest, the other concern that I have is just our class schedule. I, we work with students all day long, doing education plans, trying to plan for transfer, trying to plan for graduation. And a number of things have come up recently that are just concerning. We had a CIS 161 class in the schedule for the spring. It was due to start with the other 16-week classes. For whatever reason, it got taken out before classes started. Counselors are scrambling. We have students that need the class to graduate, need the class to transfer. We try to come up with a number of possible substitutions, which only work for local degrees. Come up with some substitutions after a lot of back and forth, and then suddenly the schedule changes and CIS 161 is back as a late start class. And all those students that just got put through the blender are suddenly, you know, invited to re-add the class that they needed in the first place. So I would just ask that when we're thinking about the schedule, that we think about the classes that are required for graduation. And if it's just one class, one section of a class is required for graduation that we roll with it. Even if enrollment is low, they need that class to graduate and to transfer and do what they need to do. Another issue that I've had is I've had students that are suddenly realizing they're short units. And they might be short units because they're switching from transfer to a CSU to a UC. And not all classes go to both systems, right? So all of a sudden, if I want to go to a UC, I might be short units. Well, it's kind of tough if you're taking 15 or 18 units in the fall and you've got the same load in the spring, where are you going to find three units? Right? So they're finding them in winter and intercession sections that are offered at other colleges. That's enrollment that we're losing. Right? So I mean, I just looked at College of the Canyons. They had four late start psych 200 classes, which are research methods. I'm almost done, I promise. And it just kills me. We had two sections, period. And psych is like one of our biggest programs. Right? So I just, when we're looking at the schedule, just planning for the sections that students need and also meeting them where they're at. I've noticed that College of the Canyons, Los Angeles Community College District, they're offering classes in every way, shape, and form. Hybrid, online, synchronous, face-to-face, you name it. So the students are picking how they want to attend. We're losing enrollment without students ever having to leave the Antelope Valley. They just go online, register for mission, register for College of the Canyons and take their classes online or synchronously. We should be able to compete in the same way. So I would just ask the board to consider that when the schedule is being planned for summer and for fall. Thank you so much.
Thank you. John Wanko.
Good evening, everybody. I'm John Wanko. I'm also work with the Office for Students with Disabilities and I'm an instructor for our college success classes as well. I wanted to address the morale on campus and how that is affecting retention of faculty and staff, which directly impacts students' abilities to take courses because we're not able to offer the courses that are needed for our students. I've been at ABC since 2015. I recognize this is a wonderful institution, as Mr. Carrato pointed out. I think ABC offers so much to our community. When I came here When I came here in 2015, this was a great place to work. I literally never had a colleague tell me they did not like their job. Since that time, as, as you have heard, there have been so many numerous changes. There was the calendar change. There was the, the high flex thing that went on last summer and fall, then returning to in-person teaching in a setting where there's very ineffective COVID protection and tracing. Faculty and staff are feeling that our voices are not heard. And I personally know a number of faculty that have left ABC. They have chosen to retire early or take jobs with other institutions because it is not a good place to be anymore. People are not happy here because of all the issues that, that we've heard. This directly impacts our student, as Mr. Spain pointed out. When counselors meet with students and we don't have a course that they need to graduate or to transfer because we don't have the faculty to teach it, we're steering them to the virtual exchange, the CVCEDU. I know that when there's lots of changes and, and this reorganization is just like the latest example of a big change that's coming where we feel we don't have a voice. Of course, when change happened, nobody, nobody likes change. People are going to complain. But I, I just ask you to, to consider that we, employees, staff, faculty, we're all feeling, nobody is hearing us. And it's directly impacting our employee retention, which really impacts students' ability to graduate and to transfer. So thank you very much.
Hey, moving to item 12.1, trustee area demographic update. We have a presentation.
Good morning, board members. My name's Doug Johnson from National Demographics. It's been a while, but it's good to be back with you. I'm here with a fairly brief presentation with what I think is some very good news. So let me jump into this. It's a little hard to see on the, on the screen there, but the, the key thing is, is after every decennial census, so in this case, after the 2020 census, we have to revisit the trustee areas and see if there's still population balanced. And the rule is, is that the difference between the smallest and largest can be no more than 10%. If it is, then we have to go through the process of redrawing those lines. So you have a lot on your plates these days, as you've been hearing. There's a lot going on in the college. And with COVID, of course, everyone in the school world is very busy, so I'm happy to say your numbers are within that 10% range. And so what that means is that you can keep your trustee election areas the way they are. So, go to the next slide. So you can go through those, if you have in your packet, you can go through the numbers in detail if you wish. But the key number is that you're within that 10%. We also did review the Voting Rights Act, which is the other law that can trigger a requirement for change. And that is not forcing a change either. You still have two majority Latino trustee areas. And you're still in all, all the requirements of the, of the federal Voting Rights Act. So, good news. So our recommendation is that you keep the, the current trustee areas, continue to use those until the 2030 census comes along. And then you'll have to revisit the numbers and, and see if you're still in balance at that point. The last slide doesn't advance, so, so I will pause there. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. This is a hearing for the public to weigh in as well. But so I'm happy to answer any questions you have now or after the public comment.
Okay, do we have any public comments? We do not? Do we have any trustee questions? We do not. Guess we're good.
Sounds good. So there is an action item later on to adopt the resolution, just formally keeping the trustee areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 12.2, 2020, 21 district measure AV and OPEB audit reports.
Good evening, members of the board. Very happy to speak to the results of the fiscal year 21 audits concerning the district of the Measure AV Financial and Performance Bond and the OPEB Trust. I'm going to be covering all of that at a very high level in this presentation. But if any members of the board would like to dive into any of the details concerning any of those reports, don't hesitate to let me know. I'm happy to cover it in greater detail. So just to start off, and it is certainly small on that screen, so my apologies there. But we just wanted to, first of all, thank the board for the privilege of continuing to work with the district in this capacity as the district's auditor. Up on the screen in extremely fine print, we have a listing of all of the state and federal requirements the district was subject to, from an audit perspective during fiscal '21. That's primarily going to concern the audit of the district. There's also compliance requirements that the OPEB Trust and Measure AV are subject to. Just to give a little bit of context to all the procedures that we test to, both across the independent auditors report for all reports where we opine on the fairness of the presentation of the overall financials, the control opinion or the yellow book opinion over controls and controls over compliance. And then finally, the federal and the state opinions as required by the state of California and the federal government due to the receipt of federal funds. And regarding those audit results, very pleased to report across all reports, across all three of those areas, we're able to provide an unmodified opinion based upon the results of our testing, which is the highest quality opinion that noter can render. Is to say, based upon the results of our work, these reports and the financials contained in these documents can absolutely be relied upon by this board, by the district, and all of the district stakeholders. One thing that we always like to do is give a recap on prior year comments going into the current year, yes?
Did you update the members of the bond committee? Have you updated that lately? Some of these people that are on this list are no longer on the list.
The list?
Yeah, a couple of people are gone. They've left it. So the, the list of the members of the board, audit board, you know, they need to be changed. You need to update this.
Gotcha. In theory, that list should be all the members of that snapshot date of June 30, '21. But we can certainly double check that to make sure that that's the case.
It's current. Okay, thank you.
Of course. Yeah, we want to get those names correct. And I have not yet spoken with the members of the committee, but once that meeting comes up, I will absolutely speak with them and answer any questions they have on the Measure AV bond report. Of course. So speaking to the two prior year comments, which again are in extremely fine print on that screen, we've got one concerning material weakness over the prior year of the fiscal '20 financials regarding capital assets and another over state compliance. On the capital assets comment was with respect to the amount of detail that was available in the prior year. We noted in the prior year, there were some balances within capital assets, which is quite a bit of money concerning all the district's capital facilities, where we were not able to obtain sufficient detail so as to perform our procedures. Very pleased to report, thanks to some really hard work done by the district, particularly a district fiscal staff under the lead of Shami, Wendy, and Sarah, some of our main contacts in fiscal. They were able to work with facilities, generate the detail for all the district's capital assets to enable a third-party, a third-party firm such as ourself to be able to go in, look at those records, and perform those procedures over capital assets to our satisfaction. And so based upon that, we are able to entirely clear that prior year material weakness. So I wanted to make sure to, to give that credit where it's due because that was a tremendous amount of work to get those records in order. And the second piece from the prior year was a state compliance finding concerning essentially a positive attendance and, and records over positive attendance, a very challenging area just based on the number of staff that are involved in essentially maintaining those records and then ultimately inputting them into the apportionment system. We do note that as a carryover comment in fiscal '21, based on a minor understatement that we've seen between the source documentation and the attendance records in the district's attendance system for fiscal '21. And so that's just a little bit of a recap on those prior year comments. And I'll speak to that current year finding in a little bit more detail in just, in just a moment. With respect to services and deliverables, a number of reports of the district report itself containing four auditors reports within that document, the financial and performance measure AV bonds containing three reports, both the independent auditors report, a control report, and a performance report where we look at the performance of Measure AV against the ballot language as required by Proposition 39. And then both an independent auditors report and a yellow book opinion over the OPEB trust. So a number of deliverables there with the only lone comment pertaining to the district report that one state compliance item out of all of the numerous state compliance items that we're required to look at by the chancellor's office on an annual basis. And speaking to that finding, which is very, very small upon that screen, we noted a very minor understatement in apportionment relative to what was determined based off of source records that we sampled from. So minor, in fact, that it does not require for us to even determine a question cost that need be reported to the chancellor's office. They note no interest in anything below a single FTES. And we're lower than an understatement of 200 contact hours, so well, well under that threshold. But nonetheless, something that we do deem to be the lesser of the two types of findings that we are required to bring to your attention. Based on our evaluation of the district's response and in speaking with district management, we do have confidence that there's a very strong chance this will be addressed going into fiscal year '22. Essentially, the district has increased standardization of the processes, increased training over this area. And we believe that, along with admissions and records taking a stronger oversight role, should be sufficient to properly reconcile those records and ultimately ensure that a source documentation agrees with the numbers for FTES reported up to the state.
Yes, who's your contact here at the college for corrections and you deal with? You deal with the college president or the finance manager?
Primarily, we're going to deal with the district's chief business officer over finance. So for fiscal '21, that's been working primarily with Shaminder Bhar over that department. And we'll also work with other departments depending on the programs that we're looking at.
So he's your main contact?
That is correct. Yeah. And just to that point, Mr. Bhar has been extremely responsive with all of our requests. One thing that we like to see, not just based on the implementation of prior findings, but also in the corrective action plan determined for current year findings, is that that plan really matches the issues that we're seeing on the ground. And we do believe that to be the case with the one lone finding over state compliance. And then a couple of quick updates in, in our world, just to give a recap on some of the national pronouncements from Gatsby. One, Gatsby 84, that the district is in timely implementation of in fiscal '21, concerns essentially bringing in fiduciary activity, which has previously been maintained as a separate set of financials within the district's report into the governmental funds. So for instance, the funds of associated students, which had always been presented separately based on guidance from, at the national level, those are now incorporated into the governmental funds and result in a very minor adjustment, a prior period adjustment to the district's net position over governmental funds, something that the district has made as required in the current year. And then looking forward to the next year, Gatsby 87, which is very, very hard to see again, I apologize. I keep pointing to that and I can't quite see it myself. Gatsby 87 pertaining to leases, where for this next year, and we'll be working with the district to ensure that all leases concerning equipment, which had previously been recorded as operating leases rather than capital, will now, thanks to Gatsby 87, be recorded as capital leases and ultimately impact district's capital assets. That's something that most firms are providing assistance, and our firm is certainly doing that for all the colleges that we work with to assist in that process of making that transition and ensuring full implementation of Gatsby 87 by June 30, '22. And with that, I want to open up for any questions any member of the board may have on those deliverables. I know I covered that at a very high level. Yes?
Your report goes to the chancellor's office?
That is correct, among other agencies, but yet crucially to the chancellor's office as part of their record-keeping over all the 73 districts in the state.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move along to 13.1, which is report of closed session action. And item 4.3, consideration of public employee discipline dismissal release of employee number 20 dash 21 slash E dash 007. A motion made by Ms. Gaines, second by Michael Adams, with a 5-0 vote. The vote, the board approved to terminate without cause the employment contract of employing number 20 dash 21 slash E dash 007, and that was on a 5-0 vote. Item 4.4. A motion was made by Mr. Adams, a second by Ms. Harvey with a 5-0 vote. The board approved public employment of interim vice president academic affairs from February 1st, 2022 through January 1st, 2023. And that was also on a 5-0 vote. And we have three other items here all related to contractual issues. A motion was made by Mr. Adams, second by Ms. Gaines with a 5-0 vote. Board denied claim number 202126001. That was on a 5-0 vote. Item 4.6. And a motion was made by Ms. Gaines, second by Ms. Harvey with a 5-0 vote. The board denied claim number 20220126002. That was on a 5-0 vote. Item 4.7, conference, well, a motion was made by Mr. Adams, second by Ms. Gaines with a 5-0 vote. The board denied claim number 20220126003 on a 5-0 vote. Okay. 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 Okay, we have a couple of people that want to speak here to a couple of items. So we're going to pull item 14.3, appointment administrators, faculty, and classified personnel. And if I can have a motion on the consent calendar, item 14.1. Is there a motion?
We approve the consent agenda.
Okay, is it second? Any discussion, hearing, non-advice?
I approve.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Moving along to action items, it's going to be 14.3, and we have a speaker card, Pamela Ford. Oh, we need a motion. Do we need a second? Okay, and Pamela?
Okay, um, it's just clarification. I brought this to the president and your attention before this meeting. And I just wanted to, I looked at the purse, at the personnel schedule again, and for Latara Edmondson, she's to be working out a classification. And I just want to clarify for the record, there's no senior, there's no administrative senior position in the classified bargaining unit. However, there, the proper title is the Senior Administrative Assistant. And that's on the confidential management side of the house. The correction wasn't made, so I wanted to bring it to your attention.
Okay, thank you. And the next speaker would be David Adams.
Good evening, President Knutson and members of the board. I emailed you yesterday morning with a concern I have with an item on 14.3 on the agenda with regards to the pay for our new incoming VP. with regards to the pay for our new incoming VP interim VP, Dr. Howard Davis. I asked for you to at least respond and acknowledge, none of you did, you're probably too busy watching the Rams game, that's okay, no worries. I did get a response from President Knutson right away, and the response said that you have authorized the board to pay him at the highest rate in the board's ratifying the contract. President Knutson, you do not speak for the board, the board is independent. I have more to say about you. Let's look at a timeline of the events here, of what happened with regards to the vice president of academic affairs. On 12/14/21, Isabel Saber was fired without cause. She had no bad performance reviews. In fact, when she was fired, she was summed into an office with Shawmi, and I want to say Laura Benson. You didn't have the courage to fire her in person. Tells me a lot about the person you are. Second, then, less than a month later, on January 11th, you announce an administrative org eliminating the VP of AA position, no more VP of AA position. Huh! Three weeks later, you hire an interim VP of AA for a position that you were planning to eliminate. Oh boy, it gets better. You hire your own personal friend, Dr. Howard Davis. No prior VP experience. I don't even believe he's been a full-time faculty member at a California community college. But wait, he applied for this position twice and was beat out by Dr. Saber. Hmm. Okay. Then, fast forward to the board agendas released on Thursday stating on 14.3 that Dr. Davis is to be paid at the highest possible step, there's eight steps for VPs, he's to be paid at step eight. Huh! Awesome, he's got 25 years in. Great, you're, you're spiking his pension. Congratulations, taxpayers of California, thank you a lot. The faculty, thank you a lot, when you're going to say there's no money for faculty. What a winner. You know, you talk about best of intentions, that's what you say this year, so let's, let's talk about your best of intentions. First of all, firing minorities for no cause. Awesome. We don't even want to get back to the Omar incident, do you? We can if you'd like. By the way, you said you wanted to meet with me on this, or we could have met and talked about it. The last few times I had a meeting with you, you canceled. I wonder why. Anyways, let's keep on. So, letting into the nepotism of hiring your friend, who did not even make it out the interview process for a full interview. And now you're paying up the highest amount, even though he has no VP experience. His pension's going to be awesome, and you're the reason why, and so are you. So when you, this conservative board talks about being stewards for the taxpayers, no you're not. You could do your part, and I'm not saying he doesn't need to be hired, I'm saying pay him the right amount. Dr. Saber was paid, even though she had two years of vice president experience, she was paid at level four, $15,000 less. So you're bringing in with some of no experience, paying them the highest amount while you're paying someone that you fired for no reason. I wonder why there's no money for teachers and students. By the way, Wednesday, Mesquite Hall 242, 11 o'clock, Biz 101, I'm teaching about leadership and transparency. I'd like to invite the board to come to my class, they'd love to hear from you. I'd invite President Knutson, but there's no integrity or leadership with him. Thank you very much.
Can I respond?
Yes.
Mr. Adams, Professor Adams, your facts are completely in error, completely wrong, as I outlined to you yesterday. The contract has been approved, to make any changes now would be in breach. And your facts are absolutely incorrect. The courtesy of a call ahead of time, I would have been able and happy to express those issues with you. You have just now defamed me in public and in writing.
No. No, I don't think we're going to have a back and forth here. We have item 14.3 on the...
The president may respond briefly to comments made by the public. He's done that. This is the board's meeting in public, it's not a sparring or a tate-to-tate between the president of the college and a member of the public who's spoken.
We have item 14.3 up for a vote. Do we have a motion? Okay, do we have a second? 14, item 14.3, it's the first action item because we moved it on the consent calendar. Here we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Advice? Oh, Mr. Reeves.
Well, Mr. Adams, no, I did read your email. I'm sorry I didn't respond to it, but I was in a hurry to get to the meeting today, but I did read it, so thank you.
Okay, any further comments, hearing none advice?
I approve.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes and yes. Item 15.1, approval of resolution number 21-22/11, adopting realigned trustee areas for Alamo Valley Community College District Board members, and this is based on the 2020 census pursuant to Education Code 5019.5. Do we have a motion? Another second. Okay, any discussion, hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item 15.2, approval of the 2020-2021 district audit, measure AV financial statements, measure AV performance audit and OPEP. And do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes and yes. Item 15.3, approval of amendment of agreement between HWW Incorporated, DBA, Ad Club Advertising Services and Alamo Valley Community College District from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2026. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second. Okay. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 15.4, approval of amendment number three to the consultant services agreement with Atchison, Atkinson, Endelson, Loya, Rudd and Romo, AALRR for services working with human resources. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? Okay, and you discussion, hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item 15.5.
Excuse me, but I filed a comment card for 15.4, I thought I did. And not 15.4? That's strange, I filed several.
15.4 as well. I also gave you my statement, so I guess y'all probably read it.
I have 15.5 on, I'm not seeing.
I tried, I tried to submit for four, five, six and seven.
I have five, six and seven.
Hmm, interesting.
Tonight?
Yep, yeah. And I also turned in my statement with my card, so y'all were probably already read it.
I'm sorry.
Let us check for a minute. Okay. It got stuck under something, okay. Ms. Ford, would you like to comment?
Excuse me, what number are we commenting on at this point?
15.4.
I just wanted clarification on this MOU approving services through that firm. And is this a contract for Laura Benson? Because I'm looking at the, the total cost, and I'm just wondering, is that for her or is that for? What is it for, $328,740?
That was her total contract for the time she's here, she's no longer here.
That was her total contract?
Yes. With expenses attached. This is an amendment to the base contract.
So why is there an amendment, is more going to be added to it? I just didn't understand it.
No, this closes the contract.
Okay.
Okay, um, is that all? Okay, Aurora?
I'll make this brief. I looked up some of the recently departed VP positions and salaries, and President Knutson's salary and benefits on Transparent California, and I was surprised to see that the $328,000, well, maybe I wasn't that surprised to see, but it was higher than the salary and benefits combined for those departed VPs, and higher than President Knutson's own salary and benefits. And I found that pretty shocking, because I realized that when we do have, you know, these consultants, that they're getting paid at a different rate and all, but that seemed pretty extreme. And I guess, like a lot of other people here, I'm concerned about appropriate use of public funds, that $328,000 seems pretty steep. And I'd love to know if I'm in error on that figure somewhere or misunderstanding it, but that appears to be a figure for about a year of service, and that's pretty high compared to all these other positions, thank you.
Okay, thank you, moving along to item 15, or do we vote already on that? Okay, we need to vote on 15.4. So do we have a motion? Or a second? We did? Okay, we did, they're saying we did. But we have to vote, okay. So, any further comments? Hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry for the little glitch. Now, we have item 15.5, and we have a couple of speakers to that item. So I'm going to ask you for a motion, and then we'll go to the speakers. Motion on 15.5. We have a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Bird?
Thank you. I realize I didn't put that on my card, but let's go with Dr. Bird, shall we? I do have a PhD in geophysics, thanks. All right, thank you for letting me speak on the last item as well. So on this one, you know, we have an interim general counsel, we have a paralegal, we have, or we did up until recently, have a very, very expensive consultant for VP of HR. And I guess I'd like to find out what duties are going to be performed through this half million dollar per year agreement. When I looked at the documents, it looks like the scope of work in the bid, it says general counsel work. Why does the college need so much legal support? I, I looked in our CBA, and it does specify that during our grievance process, neither side can have an attorney in the meetings. As we enter full CBA negotiations, it appears that the negotiations team from the district is relying primarily on the interim general counsel. Seems like that's working out pretty decently, according to Dr. Hendrix's report earlier. I do understand that there are legal needs that the general campus community has no need to know about, but this still seems like a lot of legal counsel. And again, is this an appropriate use of public funds? At the last time this agreement was approved, several years ago, there was, we did not have an interim general counsel or paralegal. So I guess I'm asking the board, how much legal support does the college need? Thank you.
I believe, Ms. Ford, you wanted to speak?
Yeah, Aurora said basically what I had a question about, and also, I'd like for somebody to define what special services is.
As is the case in general, for most districts, even those with general, internal general counsel, support from the outside is needed periodically in special circumstances in areas of expertise that a general counsel wouldn't necessarily have or would need additional support. This contract allows for us to, to engage that when necessary. It isn't a payment, a straight payment of $500,000, but rather allows us to engage those services as needed.
But I still don't know what the services are.
Can be anything from facilities to, to special work on special contracts that may, may be in a certain area, it could be litigation, it could be all kinds of things.
Contracts, contracts outside of, excuse me, contracts outside of collective bargaining? Or within collective bargaining?
Outside, primarily outside of collective bargaining, but maybe advice on a human resource issue that deals with something within the CBA, and I'm going to ask Ms. Cook to go ahead and further answer the question.
Thank you. The other issue would be litigation. As general counsel, general counsel is just that, a generalist, that covers all types of areas of education law. As a single person, I don't have the resources or the network of a full law firm that may be able to assist the district with specific items or items that they have worked on, on behalf of the college in the past, but specifically the litigation aspect such as unfair labor practices that are required of the appearance in court on a regular basis or more than on a one-time matter. Those are the types of things that are contemplated, as well as investigations into misconduct where the internal general counsel may potentially have a conflict, because the general counsel may have relationships with the people who are the subject of an investigation. So there are a wide range of things that could come up, and as the president said, this is not a payment directly to the firm for those services, but allows us to engage them in the event that we do need them.
Doesn't Atkinson, Endelson, Lloyd, Rudd and Romo have full staff and services?
Yes, and as, I'm sure you've taken a look at the rates that they charge for those services, if we don't need to pay for those services, and those services can be completed internally, which is the presumption that my position and my assistant's position were created on, we will do that, and we can do those at a fixed rate as opposed to at an hourly rate that you see in the schedule of fees from the firm.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, and any discussion from the board, hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item 15.6, and we do have a couple of speaker cards for that, so approval to enter into an agreement with Joel Schaefer, DBA Joel Schaefer Consulting, to provide services of grievance arbitration and/or mediation. Do we have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have two speaker cards, I believe Dr. Bird is one.
Thank you. Again, my, I question the purpose of this agreement as it, as regards faculty, our collective bargaining agreement does not actually require mediation, although it is a step in our grievance process that can be used. However, in our collective bargaining agreement, when mediation does occur, there is a specific firm or company, not this one that's listed. So my question is, who exactly is going to be going to mediation using the contract that you're getting ready to approve or considering approving? And my other concern is, how is it impartial when the college has a standing contract with a mediator? Thank you.
May I, Mr. President?
Yes.
The contract that is being brought forth for consideration by the board tonight is by an individual who was employed by the very company and was referred to us by the very company listed in the collective bargaining agreement. I believe it's the Center for Dispute Resolution, the individual that has been used in the past for mediations by both federations, is no longer taking assignments from the college, and as a result, recommended or referred us to this individual who also is an employee or affiliated with the Center for Dispute Resolution. You're welcome to contact Mr. Clop, I know that you're very familiar with him, and verify my assertion here. So the purpose of this is because the federation, at least one federation, has a pending matter where they requested mediation, came before the board and insisted that that process be followed, and we find a mediator. Given that the mediator listed in the collective bargaining agreement was not available, we were finally able to get someone else assigned through the very organization listed in the collective bargaining. through the very organization listed in the collective bargaining agreement. So this person is, meets the requirements of the collective bargaining agreement without us having to go outside as the federation had requested and suggested that we do in the past in violation of their own collective bargaining agreement.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor?
I have a card up there.
Oh, okay, sorry, Pam. Pam Ford.
Thank you, Ms. Cook, for your explanation. I deal with Ken all the time. I find, it seems to me like he would have mentioned that to me, so I will be reaching out to him. Um. He's never done business like that before, so I'll reach out to him and find out how this mediator was selected. Thank you.
Okay, we have the motion and the second. And any discussion up here? Hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
And approved unanimously. Okay, moving along to item fifteen point seven, and I see we have two speaker cards. Approval to enter into an agreement with State of California Department of General Services, Office of Administrative Hearings, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-seven. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? Okay, and we have two speaker cards. Ms. Ford.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to say one other thing about the last one. We don't have binding arbitration, so I don't even know why that's included. And the district always goes against it when we're bargaining. As for this one, this is a forty-eight thousand dollar contract, I think. Is this potentially to be used regarding matters related to bargaining? This.
This contract with the Department of General Services, the district actually should have, should always maintain a contract with the Department of General Services in the event there are issues that are to be presented before the Office of Administrative Hearing, particularly in the situations with layoffs. Miss, the federation has made a demand for a hearing for individuals. The district's not in a position to hold hearings for individuals if they don't have a contract with the hearing office. We are entering into such an agreement to make sure that when there is a request for a hearing, as we have, or a demand for a hearing, as we have right now, that we have an appropriate hearing officer available to, to listen to the matter and to conduct the matter. And so we have a hearing officer approved to do that. We can't grant the request for a hearing, so we're obliging your demand, Ms. Ford, by enlisting the services.
Not completely. Normally, when we've had hearings, both sides go down a list and select whoever's going to conduct the hearing. So I'm not clear on that one, but I will check with CFTs legal to see how that's supposed to work.
Okay.
And, and it's not that the, the federation, yes, requested a hearing, but that's because of the new law that went into place concerning layoffs for classified employees.
In the same standard for classified employees, it applies to what applies for faculty employees. And this is the standard. That's, this is what classified gets now, is the same type of hearing. And we're just following the new law, AB four thirty-eight that you referred to.
Okay, Dr. Bird.
I think Ms. Ford pretty much covered my comments here. But again, I guess I was wondering why the college was having a contract for this and how it ends up being impartial when the college is, has a contract with a specific judge, it sounds like, versus, as Pam said, the going down a list and crossing off people until we come to an agreement on somebody that can hear a matter. I think she covered it, though. Thank you.
The entire state of California has a contract with the Office of Administrative Hearing, not just Allo Valley College. They handle all layoffs. And so classified now have the same rights that teaching faculty have, and they have the right to have their hearing heard through the Office of Administrative Hearing, who's impartial. So every community college in the state of California does the same thing.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion up here? Hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item fifteen point eight, and we have no public comment. Approval of the side letter agreement between Allo Valley College Federation of Teachers, AVCFT, and Allo Valley Community College, AVCCD, regarding interim dean providing instruction as an adjunct for spring two thousand twenty-two. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, coming down to. Okay, we're going to take item fifteen point nine now. And approval of the side letter agreement between Allo Valley College Federation of Teachers, AVCFT, and Allo Valley Community College, AVCCD, regarding AFMT three twenty lean management instructor for two, spring two thousand twenty-two. Do we have a motion?
So move.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay. Yeah, we have. Yeah, Pam, you, you have a card up here that's marked for agenda item fifteen nine. Is that something you wanted to say something about? Okay.
But your title is COVID MOU for faculty. Oh, yes, I did. Yes, I did, but I, I, the next item on the agenda refers to that. That's why. It's, it's up to which, you marked fifteen nine, so if you want to speak to it.
Why don't you go ahead?
Go ahead and speak to it.
Yes.
Okay. Um. I just had a question because my legal counsel pointed out to me that he was informed that the classified, that the district had intended to provide the same fifteen hundred dollar stipend to classified and to non-faculty employees, classified CMS, as Mr. Knudsen had indicated, but we haven't heard anything about this. So I just wondered, he just wanted to know what happened because they said that's what you guys were going to do.
Ms. Ford, on Friday, your legal counsel contacted me. He's been on a personal leave since January twelfth. And out of respect for his personal leave, he and I had not had any further discussion, but he did contact me on Friday to address this. And he did know about it, and that's why he was following up with me on Friday because he and I discussed it on December thirteen, sorry, December fourteen of last year. And so he and, he and I are in communication, and we'll work out the issue for classified. As you know, the same benefits being offered to faculty are being offered to classified.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion, board members? Hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen ten. Approval of spring two thousand twenty-two memorandum of understanding between Allo Valley College Federation of Teachers, ACFT, and Allo Valley Community College District, AVCCD, regarding faculty work terms and guidelines. Do we have a motion? Okay, second motion, any discussion? Hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen eleven. Approval of academic policies and procedures, APNP, committee's recommendation of course listing. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fifteen point twelve. Approval to award contract to Keenan and Associates for Workers' Compensation Program from July first, two thousand twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Is there a motion?
So move. Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Reeves?
I'm just wondering why we have a three-year contract. Is that standard for a workman's comp program to have a three-year contract? Does anybody know?
Yes, it is standard, and we did go out to bid this year.
Thank you.
Okay, any further comments or discussions? Okay, hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item fifteen point thirteen. Approval to utilize California State University's Cooperative Agreement with CSU Stanislaus, DBA Parking Management Bureau, PMB, for the district's parking needs. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Hey, is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen point fourteen. Approval to utilize cooperative agreement held by Link System International, Inc., for the district's online tutoring needs. Do we have a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Reeves.
I'm wondering, all these agreements that we have tonight, did we get three bids for each agreement, or we just continuing old agreements? Does anybody know?
When it's, when, when a bid is required, we get a bid. We usually get three quotes and will compare those. Some of these are continuing. Shami can add more to it.
Yeah, in this case, Trustee Reeves, this is a piggyback agreement, but this is a continuing agreement, and our staff is diligent. Whenever they can realize the savings, they definitely do. But the rates here are very competitive, especially considering the worker shortage we're experiencing here.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen point fifteen. Approval to ratify agreement with UJ Incorporated for cloud video hosting. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen point sixteen. Approval to extend use of the Amazon Services LLC Cooperative Agreement through Omnia Partners Public Sector, formerly US Communities, and Prince William County Public Schools. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen point seventeen. Approval to enter into negotiations with Cambridge West Partnership LLC as a qualified contractor for educational master plan. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Item fifteen point eighteen. Approval to enter into negotiations for facilities master plan agreement with Arthur Gensler Jr. and Associates, Inc., as a qualified contractor to assist the district in preparing a comprehensive facilities master plan. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item fifteen nineteen. Approval of agreement with Public Safety and Economic Growth, PubSeg, for COVID tracking and tracing services with HERF funds. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Item fifteen point two oh. Approval to purchase AWS cloud training services from Amazon Web Services with HERF funds. Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fifteen point twenty-one. Approval to ratify agreement with Golden Star Technology, Inc., for audiovisual installation in UHazy Hall with HERF funds. And is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen point two two. Approval to utilize NE Systems Incorporated Piggyback Agreement through California Multiple Award Schedule, CMAS, with HERF funds. Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen point two three. Approval to purchase and install outdoor gym equipment and flooring with HERF funds. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen point two four. Approval of non-resident and capital outlay fee rates for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. Is there a motion? Okay, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? I mean, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen point two five. Approval of project assignment amendment with Coming Management Group Incorporated for Labor Compliance Services. Katie Lab Project, twenty-one dash zero fifteen. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none? Advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen point two six. Approval of authorization to award bid number AVC two thousand twenty-one slash two thousand twenty-two dash six. Campus Infrastructure Project seventeen zero two nine to TAFT Electric with AV, Measure AV Funds. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Yes.
Is that a second?
It's not a second. Second and questions.
Okay.
We seem to be awarding a lot of contracts to TAFT Electric. Do we get bids for these electric services, or do we just automatically go to TAFT Electric? Does anybody have a?
No, it goes through a competitive process, and as it says, we're awarding the bid to TAFT, and it goes through a competitive process.
Thank you.
Okay, any further comments, discussion?
Yes, I have a question. I just want clarification. Does the state set the limit at which something must be referred out to bid?
Yes, there is a mandatory bid limit. We also are part of a group called CAPCA, is the accounting piece, where we can put groups of vendors and contractors together so that we can work with local companies on smaller projects. And it raises the bid limit. I think it's now, correct me, Shami, it's, I think it's two hundred thousand, isn't it?
Okay. Any further questions, discussion? Okay, hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now. Item fifteen point two seven. Approval of contract with Norstan Communications Incorporated, DBA Black Box Network Services for Single Mode Fiber Installation Infrastructure, seventeen dash zero two nine with Measure AV Funds. Is there a motion?
So move. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen point two eight. Approval of contract with Tyco Fire and Security, UIS Management Incorporated, DBA Johnson Controls Fire Protection LP, Simplistic Grenell LP for Single Mode Fiber Complete Conversion Fire Alarm Installation Infrastructure, seventeen dash zero nine, zero two nine with Measure AV Funds. Is there a motion?
So move.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen point two nine. Approval of insurance program coverage extension proposal to statewide educational wrap-up program for swing space two, project eighteen dash zero eleven with Measure AV Funds. Is there a motion?
So move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen point three oh. Approval of change orders for Sage Hall seventeen dash zero three one with Measure AV Funds. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen point three one. I believe we have a comic card. Okay, approval of change. Okay, approval of change orders for Student Services Project seventeen dash zero three seven with Measure AV Funds. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have one card in this. Pamela Ford.
Yeah, I just would like some explanation as to this change order. I have a personal interest in student services.
You want to go to the mic? Want to go to the mic?
These change orders are, have to do with MBC. They, they are going to other contractors. In the end, everything will be backcharged. These are the backcharges to MBC.
But what does that mean? Was somebody here or did they went away or what?
They're, they're deducting these from their contract. And then we, we add it to another contractor's contract who can do it on the job.
So is that going to call for additional funds or funds coming back to the district or what?
It's gonna, it's gonna balance out at the end, pretty much. We're taking all these numbers that are here in brackets. These are being deducted from their contract amount.
Because when you look at each page, the way it's set up, it, it, it just, it, it didn't go together. So I was just trying to figure out, are we getting money back? Are we spending more money? What's going on?
So. So Ms. Ford, what it should be, there should be a, a net zero effect. We are working with a surety on some of these change orders. We don't expect a, a, a net impact to the district. We do expect.
But there is an impact.
At this time, you see an impact with the change orders, but we are working with, with our surety to address that.
So is something going to come back once this is finalized?
This change order here is money coming back. This is, this right here.
That's how, that's how it read. Some is money coming back. It looks like some is money going away. It was just hard to follow.
It's deducting, this is their original contract amount. We're deducting three hundred, one hundred ninety-five thousand dollars from that. This is their new contract amount. This, and this right here is another deduction here, and that's their final contract amount. So the contract amount to the original contractor has been deducted three hundred and three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Okay? That amount of money will then go to another contractor so that they can do the work. So it's.
So how much of that goes to the other contractor?
All of it. We, we are expecting no net difference. We're expecting it to even out to zero.
So will there be a new contract brought forward once you get with the new contractor? Or is that supposed to be it?
We've already hired a new contractor.
We already have a contract with the other contractor. We are adding to their contract.
We had to replace a contractor. And this is the, the accounting exchange that called for having one removed and one added.
Well, I think you'll agree, it's not real clear. Maybe next time it can be.
It's, it's not clear and we're timing issues that so that it, it can't all come at the same time because as information becomes known, it's coming, and it's coming piecewise. So you'll see additive change orders which add to it. You'll see deducted which remove from it. But at the end, it should net to zero. If it doesn't, if there is a budget increase, then you'll see that budget increase come across as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. A second. Any discussion by the board? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item fifteen point three two. Approval of change orders for Discovery Lab Project seventeen dash zero three nine with Measure AV Funds.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen point three three. Approval of change orders for Spring, Swing Space to Project eighteen dash zero eleven with Measure AV Funds. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fifteen point three four. Approval of the Division of the State Architects' Fees Infrastructure Project seventeen dash zero three nine with Measure AV Funds. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen point three five. Approval of Division of State Architect Fees Campus Security Building seventeen dash zero four oh with Measure AV Funds. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, discussion? Hearing none, advice?
I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we move along to information items. Sixteen point one. Administra, administrative reorganization. You want them to go first? Okay, Dr. Bird?
Okay. Thank you for letting me speak again. Despite what I've been told, I still don't believe the process in AP thirty-one hundred C was followed. According to AP thirty-one hundred C five, quote, "The administrator overseeing the review will present the proposed changes and a summary of campus feedback to CCC for discussion," end quote. I contacted VP Brar in his role as Chair of CCC to find out when President Knudsen had or was planning to provide a summary of campus feedback to CCC for discussion. President Knudsen did attend CCC on January twenty-sixth, where he did answer some questions. However, he acknowledged that the feedback had been due on January twenty-fourth, two days prior. He'd received it on the twenty-fifth, one day prior, and he had not yet had an opportunity to fully review it. At CCC on February ninth, VP Brar, VP Brar, excuse me, graciously responded to this, my question for him. But he asserted that President Knudsen had stated that he had in fact provided a summary of campus feedback at the meeting on January twenty-sixth. He also asserted that because some of us emailed feedback from our constituent groups to other members of CCC that this counted as the official summary from President Knudsen of the campus feedback. Forgive me if I'm remembering that wrong. No document was received. That was a summary of campus feedback. And again, on the January twenty-sixth meeting, President Knudsen had acknowledged that he had not yet fully reviewed the feedback. So I'm confused as to how that was also a summary of it. The document provided to the campus last week on February seventh appears to be based on AP thirty-one hundred C seven. It appears to be the, quote, "final version of the proposed changes," end quote, not a summary of campus feedback. I would like to state to the board that this administrative procedure was last revised in May twenty-twenty-one. Given that the changes brought forward by then-Chair of CCC interim General Counsel, Ms. Cook, on behalf of the administration, didn't actually relate to this portion of the AP. It's perplexing and likely, or perhaps hypocritical, that the college president doesn't seem to be following the longstanding past precedent and procedure that he in fact did follow at a previous reorg, maybe more than one previous reorg. Since I never received a summary of campus feedback, and I'm thus not sure that the five pages of feedback provided on behalf of the Federation were ever read by President Knudsen, I would like to use the remainder of my three minutes of public speaking time on this matter to read the feedback into the record. But it looks like I've got five seconds left, so that's not going to fly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ford.
Mr. President Buffalo and Board of Trustees, change is not the issue. Though this reorganization has come to you as an information item, I think it's important to identify for you gaping holes within this reorganization, which are counter to AP thirty-one hundred. If you recall, during the last reorg, there was a great deal of concern because the president refused to meet with CCC as per AP thirty-one hundred. And now the step to provide a response to campus feedback has been ignored for this reorganization. As an example, the newly proposed positions bypass vetted processes as they do not exist in any of our planning documents. And none of the costs for these positions have gone through the HR nor budget process as is required of all other positions. Number two, in the document, he cites as a justification, Title V, Section five-three-zero-two-one-one. There is a reorganization that does not result in the net increase in the number of employees, yet. He is increasing the net increase of employees by five positions as listed in his reorganization. And those positions are Administrative Coordinator Palmdale, Director of Enrollment Services, Director of the Learning Center, Director of Maintenance and Operations and Grant Writing. That's five over. Number three, also cited as a justification is Title V, Section five-two-zero, five-two, five-three-two, five-three-zero-two-one, C three. And it states, "A position which is currently occupied by an incumbent is upgraded, reclassed, or renamed without," hear this, "without significantly altering the duties being performed by the individual." But how can you justify that when you're upgrading a classified position to a CMS position, which would definitely increase the duties? This is also reflected of many of the other positions being upgraded. Side stepping of processes leaves the appearance that you, as board members, are turning a blind eye to established vetted processes and allowing one individual to use our treasury as his own and to elevate the salaries of those he chooses. It would garner respect for you as the Board of Trustees to take a definitive, definitive position and insist on adhering to the vetted approved policies and procedures and seek to have this reorganization occur when the new president has an opportunity to view the campus with fresh eyes and determine the best course of action to move AVC forward for the betterment of our students and campus community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knudsen. Okay, we have nothing to report there. Item sixteen point two. Correct? Okay, so we don't have anything to report on COVID update or anything. Okay, we'll move down to reports and announcements. Academic Senate Van Rider. Or Jason.
We're Academic Senate President Van Rider, and he has a report prepared for the board. The Senate strongly, the Senate strongly encourages the administration to evaluate the fall twenty-twenty-two course schedule and approve a measured increase to the number of online sections. A slight increase from the estimated three to five percent would empower division deans and department chairs to better address the instructional needs of the students in their areas. Two, in recent years, the Senate has observed an increased distance between the board and the AVC community, in particular, the faculty as a whole. This widening gap might be attributed to a variety of factors, including the pandemic, decreased opportunities to engage outside of a monthly meeting, and the constant pressure to deal with the waves of issues that frequently face the college. All of us may feel frustrated and misunderstood in such moments. We can overcome these challenges by striving for increased collaboration, communication, and a greater level of trust in each other. Our invitation to the Board of Trustees is to look for ways to close that gap. The Academic Senate is charged with making appropriate recommendations to the administration and consulting collegially with the governing board. This can only happen if we find ways to build a relationship that fosters this consultation so we can build on common ground, clarify our expectations of each other, solve problems, and find resolutions to them through mutual agreement. The Senate invites members of the board to attend the public senate meetings, to visit with the senate president or the senate executive committee, and to attend faculty professional development activities and other campus events to see what faculty are engaged in and to come to know who we are. Conversely, this will help us to know you. Please know that our door is open.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Bird?
The Federation is troubled by the use of interim administrators. Currently, the only regular VP is the VP of Administrative Services. Three VP positions are vacant or held by interims. The general counsel position is held by an interim. Five deans are currently interim. In addition, there have been two hires that didn't work out, an interim VP, who has announced in the AV Press but doesn't seem to have ever worked here despite board approval, and an interim dean who is apparently here for a day. Interim hires made without an open call for applicants and consultants hired without a publicly advertised hiring process or bid process, as described in AP seventy-one twenty, contribute to the feeling that many faculty have of lack of transparency. AP seventy-one hundred and AP thirty-four twenty cover commitment to diversity and equal employment opportunity. Appointing an interim with no hiring process makes a mockery of the college's own procedures. Without a hiring process, can you be certain that all current employees with interest in the position had a chance to apply? How do you know that you selected the best possible candidates without a hiring process? An article on January twentieth in the AV Press states, quote, "Asked how he found the proposed candidates for the interim positions, Knudsen said there are executive search firms that conduct searches for interim positions." Knudsen can also draw on his own contacts, quote, "I have been in the state and in touch with a lot of people over twenty years now in the state of California, so my network is pretty broad," end quotes. "I've checked through the minutes of board meetings, and I have not yet found an item related to hiring an executive search firm for interim positions, although a contract was approved with the firm for the ongoing president superintendent search. As far as I know, only one position, a dean position, featured a call for applications. My deduction is thus that President Knudsen is hiring interim administrators based on primarily his own personal contacts. This is exactly the sort of behavior that appears to circumvent any interest in equity or equality of opportunity for promotion. I would be remiss if I didn't also mention the ongoing pandemic in tonight's report. I continue to have students reporting deaths in their families. Colleagues continue to be exposed or end up on quarantine and isolation. Some of them have ended up extremely ill. Some have had family members end up ill. At least one has reported a COVID-related death in their family. When will the California paid COVID sick leave from recent legislation be applied retroactively to January first, twenty-twenty-two for faculty and staff? This is critically important for people who have been quarantined and unable to work remotely over the last couple of months. I'd like to remind you that many adjuncts don't have adequate health insurance, and who knows how the prices of the college's benefit plans may eventually be affected by the costs being run up at this time. As the state, but not LA County, ends its indoor mask mandate, I urge the college to reconsider its stance on a vaccine or test mandate and to recommit to a policy of universal indoor masking, at least through the end of the semester. Faculty are, quite frankly, disappointed with the administration. Can I have another, like, sixty seconds, please?
I'll give you sixty-seven.
Thank you. As we just saw tonight, faculty showed up with some strong heartfelt words. Members of the campus community have a right to address their elected officials. It's possible the speakers can get details wrong, but most of what I heard tonight seems pretty cut and dried. From where I sit, I feel like I saw an apparent attempt to intimidate someone by telling them that their facts are in error and accusing them of defamation. Attacking an employee from a position of power as their supervisor seems to be a regular part of the AVC administration playbook and is a showcase of exactly why this campus climate has become toxic. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Ms. Ford?
I think you have my statement up there somewhere, so you may have already read it, but everyone hasn't heard it. At last month's board meeting, Mr. Buffalo, in an unbridled moment of candor, you stated at the January tenth board meeting that you were tired of this diversity stuff and that we had an African-American president and CFO and even had a Hispanic interim twice. Your statement spoke volumes. As my grandmother would say, quoting Luke chapter six, verse forty-five, "Out of the abundance of the heart, the mouth speaks." Your statement created a chilling effect for many because our campus is comprised of individuals of diverse backgrounds, and we are a Hispanic-serving institution. I believe the comments by the speakers that evening, including myself, were of concern over people of color as a whole being dismissed, not just people of color. As a matter of fact, the two individuals that were dismissed that we were discussing were both minorities, not both were African-American. However, I might add, you play, you place the woman on leave who was a minority and replaced her with a male not of color. So I think the facts speak for themselves. And there is an established pattern since twenty-fourteen and possibly late twenty-thirteen that diverse groups in administrative roles have been consistently terminated. Not sure if that is to inspire fear by sending a message. So we've had three vice presidents of academic affairs, all women, one vice president of administrative services, one dean, African-American, one director, uh, a, a non-minority over fifty, two directors, Hispanic, and executive director of the foundation Hispanic. In my role as president, I represent all groups and am fortunate to understand that diversity covers a wide spectrum. Age, ethnicity, disability, race, socioeconomic status, gender, exceptionalities, language, religion, sexual orientation, geographical area, and even political standing. Making that statement and doubling down stressing the hiring of African-Americans and Hispanics speaks volumes about the limited thinking within our leadership. But one only need look at the back wall to see this campus does not have a long history of hiring people of color in leadership positions. All you gotta do is look over there.
Ms. Ford, please wrap it up.
And it, it's funny you tell everybody else that you, you can, you're friendly about it with, with me. Please wrap it up.
Wrap it up.
And the, and the few hired does not make up for those passed over or terminated. I hope that no one of the limited thinking, is of the limited thinking that eliminating a person of color from an administrative position and elevating other people of color somehow erases the stain of big bigotry. No, it defies it. We have work to do on this campus. In recognition of Black History Month, I will close with the, with the significant quotes from Dr. Martin Luther King's speech of March tenth, nineteen sixty-eight, "The Other America," but in the form of a question, I'll make his statements. We are struggling today for equality. Why must we demand genuine equality? Why are we struggling? Why are we still here? One last point. I understand there's some, some concerns about the union work that goes on and what I'm doing and so forth. If you have a question about me, if anybody wants to know where I am, you know where I'm located. If you wanna know what I'm doing, all you have to do is pick up the phone and call me six-two-six-six. But this behavior that's been going on lately and send it administrators to be, uh, abusive and all these other things that are going on is just, needs to stop. We need to find at least one grown-up in the room. Thank you.
Hey, Michelle Hernandez. Does anybody hear from Michelle? Okay, thank you. Okay, do I have a student organization? Machine?
Good evening, everyone. Um, as for my report, ASO is priming, refining, and cooling down at the moment. We're priming ASO for the next set of officers. We, it's brought to, it was brought to our attention during the meeting that anything and everything that we've done thus far would be for no reason if there are not enough officers to take up the mantle next semester or next school year. We're refining what we've done thus far, so we're just looking to make sure that it can continue on to next year, so it does not fall apart. We're cooling down because ninety percent of the officers are planning on walking the stage and transferring out. So we're more focused on commencement, but that's not the say that we're going to give up on our ASO duties. And, uh, the college is now activated with region six and SS triple C. SS, or, well, the region, uh, is still trying to be activated as a whole, so they still need other schools to activate within the region for it to be, um, fully activated, I guess you would say. And our advisor talked to us about the administrative reorganization to help us understand it just a little bit better. And as far as my report, I believe that concludes it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have, uh, Allen Valley College Federation, Diane.
Foundation, I think.
Foundation.
So, so my news is always more positive. I'm sorry. So, um, we are finishing up our scholarship program, uh, applications this week. This is the last week where we go from about a hundred and fifty to three hundred, so we're just watching them grow day by day. So any of you that are interested in, in, uh, helping review scholarships, we've made the call out for past, um, community members as well as, uh, college members. We have about eighty on the list, and we can always use more. We hope to award anywhere between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand this, uh, next fall, uh, twenty-twenty-two. Wine walk, you heard mentioned already. We are gonna give it a go. April twenty-third, still a hundred dollars a ticket, lots of wine. We're gonna add some beer this year, for those of you who like beer, and non-alcoholic, um, offerings as well. Music, food, silent auction, it's always a great event. So, um, if you have anybody in the interest, it's online or give me a call. We'll be glad to help you with that. And then, uh, Mr. Carrato had asked if I could ask each of you as a trustee to hang for just a minute to sign the back of his plaque. He really wanted your signature, so I'll come up and, and hand you the, the plaque to signature. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, office of the superintendent president?
No report tonight.
Board member comments?
Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. Um, I am looking forward to the Sage Hall Open House, that is this Wednesday, as well as the Political Science Zoom meeting. Hope to see you all there. And I'd also like to congratulate Mr. uh, Coronado with his achievements.
Thank you. Mr. Adams?
No report.
And Mr. Reeves?
Yes, I wanted to say a few things. First of all, Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. There was a comment by, uh, Mr. Adams. He's not here. No, we're here to listen. And some of you know, you can call me at any time, email me at any time. I will not make a comment on what you're saying, but I will listen to you. And then you can wait till I'm up here and hear what I say about what you discuss. But I'm willing to listen, so it's not a case that we're not here to listen. We are here to listen. And I am reading the reorganization packets. I'm asking questions. Want you to know that. I have concerns. And, uh, if you have concerns about anything, please call or email me. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Harvey?
Yeah, so we went, we end the week, uh, with Lincoln's birthday, and we start next week with President's Day. Uh, so I thought it was, uh, very poignant, just a quote from Abraham Lincoln. Nearly all men can stand adversity, but if you want to test a man's character, give him power. I think that's very, very relevant. Thank you.
Miss Gaines?
I just wanted to say, uh, first of all, uh, Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. And, uh, Diane, I'm, I'm very happy to, um, hear about the, um, multiple scholarships that you will be awarding this year. I know Allen Valley School Boards Association, uh, always gives, uh, scholarships out to some of our, um, high school seniors. I, I hope that always includes Roseman High School, early college campus, uh, in there. So it's, it's really great to see, and, um, um, we welcome back, uh, your wine walk. I know that's a, a huge fundraiser for the scholarship program as well, and so that's, that's great to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I wanna reference something that Ms. Ford said. Number one, I, part of my reference was that, was the faculty members coming up here and talking to us about diversity of our faculty, right? Here's the deal. Nobody on the board sits on the faculty hiring commission, committees. Faculty members do. So complaining to us about a lack of diversity in the faculty goes back to them. We don't sit on those boards. They do. Okay, that's one of my points. Uh, I also wanna address something else. One of the things that I'm seeing out here, and I am available out here. I'm on this campus three or four days a week. I walk. I talk to students. I talk to classified staff. I talk to faculty members all the time. So when we look at this thing, and I look at some things that are kinda going on, there's a lot of embellishment of rumors and hearsay and these kinds of things. That bothers me a little bit, because I'm gonna take you back a few years and talk to you about something that happened after Dr. Fisher was injured in the accident. And the board made a move. We decided we're gonna have to hire an interim because we're in the process of hiring a new president, but we haven't done it yet. We had people stream to this mic telling us that we shouldn't hire the person that we had already hired, right? This was a person they told the board at that time they were hiring. It wasn't true, but that's what they told us. They sent us emails. When I walked the campus, people come over. We know you're hiring this individual, and we think that's wrong. We think this is a mistake. You expressed yourselves. I didn't comment when you talked to me, other than asking, "Where did you hear this at?" Well, I heard it from a couple of people in our division. I kept asking people until a couple of faculty members said, and this is very interesting, somebody overheard something. Okay, now I'm gonna tell you the reality of what happened, and you don't understand. You don't know what happens in closed sessions. Number one, the individual name that everybody was certain, where we're gonna hire, the name never came up. The person we hired was Patricia Marquez. It's the only name that came up in the whole discussion. And yes, this entire campus was certain we were gonna hire somebody else and claimed we'd already made that decision. You know, this is where you spread rumors, and we should learn by the Supreme Court situation, where NPR ran with a hearsay story, spread it all over the place, and then they had to correct it. Sometimes these things are not accurate. And just saying that they're accurate because you think that, are you hear, hearsay? Are you hear rumors is disrespectful of this body. And it really, we need a better atmosphere on this campus. I agree with that. But that starts with you guys as well as everybody else. Okay? Thank you.
Attitude reflects leadership.
Ms. Ford, your time is up. Thank you. Lordy. Okay, we're going, we don't have a closed session, and we have no report out. And our next meeting is going to be March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two.